Good evening and welcome to the January 8th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. I hope everyone is enjoying a very good New Year. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. And if anyone else is recording the meeting, we do need to be notified. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. Also, this meeting is being conducted in the hybrid format, and I'll read you a few points about that. Pursuant to Governor Haley's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL 30A 20 until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, and the conference ID number is 467-982-141 pound. You may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that's in the agenda posted on the town website. And as I mentioned, while this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So let's start with a roll call of the board. Our Vice Chair Art Spru is connected remotely. Art, do you want to just acknowledge your presence?
Yes, this is Art Spru. I'm present. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you. And Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, present.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt, present.
And Bob Dubas will not be joining us tonight. I'm Catherine Halpern, and I am present. Is there anyone that needs to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda? All right, then let's go to our first agenda item, which are the minutes for the December 18th, 2023 meeting. Any corrections, amendments, additions, may have a motion to approve if that's the case?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the, actually, it was the December 18th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
I second.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
And Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the minutes for December 18th, 2023. Next item on our agenda is the Continued Public Hearing for the Modification of a Definitive Subdivision Plan for Zero Cleo Lane. There are some things that have been clarified as far as the timeline that we have available to us. And at the request of the applicant, we want to again continue this public hearing, keep the public hearing open, and continue it, I believe, to February 12th, as Katie's confirming. So we do need to vote on that, that we continue this public hearing until February 12th. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we continue the public hearing for the Zero Chloe's Lane modification of subdivision to February 12th.
Thank you. And a second?
Well, Wertschafter seconds.
So let's do a vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, this is actually an informal discussion regarding the consideration of a modification of a definitive subdivision plan. This is for the property at 79 Forest Beach Road and Bobby's Lane. We initially, the planning board initially approved a subdivision plan for this property, it looks like the 13th of May, 2022. The applicant has come back to us with some request for a modification. But before we even consider that request for a modification, we thought it would be useful to have an informal discussion with the applicant and with Thad Eldridge regarding the issues involved. And also, I should mention that our Vice Chair Art Spru, along with our former planner, Ryan Kristenberry, did do a site visit and met with the applicant and with Thad to review the requests. And I do have some comments from Art about that. First, what I'd like to do is if I could ask you, Thad, to present what the request will be, and could you carefully, for the benefit of the board and the public, compare what was approved in May of 2022 and the alterations that you would like us to consider?
Absolutely. For the record, Thad Eldridge, he's Southeast. The Peralts are here with me. So this project went through a lot of discussion. We had two on-sites. We had one preliminary plan that was then modified for the definitive at the request of the planner, who was not able to make it to the definitive hearing because of maternity leave. Quotations were obtained, and the site work for the final plan was excessive, well into the six figures and more work than necessary for one lot. It would also require a significant amount of regrading of the property for the house to go in. So we started the process of looking at what can we do to bring this into something more reasonable that doesn't disturb the site, maintains more of the existing contours. We started conversations with the former town planner, and those kind of hung up as she left her position. So now we're here before you without a town planner, or an interim town planner, a director acting as one, in order to say, okay, what can we do here to bring this into something a bit more reasonable? The real change that we've made between the approved plan and the current is completely within the lot. As you may recall, 79 was completely renovated. The historic structure was brought back from something a little bit out of date to something that the Historic Commission is pretty happy with. The vacant lot that came out of the subdivision, the Peralts would like to build their retirement home there. The original plan, and I don't know if you can bring that one up. So we went from a 7% grade, which is the standard, up to a 15% grade in the driveway to a turning T at the top. This required the stormwater system down in the road and another stormwater system for the section of road at the top. And now, sorry, Annie, can I have you go back to the other one?
Thad, could I just ask you to go back to where you were and just point out how, although we don't need to specifically consider the house placement, we asked you to place it on the lot so we could see how the access from the driveway, because the issue was is that you can't, you cannot have frontage on Forest Beach.
Correct.
So we had to put the frontage on Bobby's Lane. So can you just, with your arrow, kind of show how the approved subdivision accesses, the house is at a kind of angle? Is that correct?
The house was at an angle. So we had the road coming up, the 7%, going up to the 15% to a flat parking area.
And a turnaround there.
Yes, with a turnaround. And this was a walkout basement with access there. Also a set of stairs and a set of stairs bringing you up to the upper levels.
And is there a garage on that?
There is no garage on this plan.
And was the garage accessed by the driveway that comes in from Bobby's Lane? It's just hard for me to see.
There was no garage proposed at this time.
Okay, that's what I...
The intention was to leave a space here to have the garage at the upper level, coming in off of Forest Beach Road.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So then with the proposal, we're cutting the turning T short, constructing the 7% section, the same road that was in the road layout as previously approved, and then just putting in a turning T at the top, just of that 7%. That gets away from that 15% bit of driveway. And while this is a bit far, there's still access from the turnaround to the building itself. Set of stairs that will come up here, set of stairs up, you can get to the front door, or there'll still be a walkout. This brings the house up several feet, which matches the grade of the higher point of the property, which is the flatter part of the property. We're still providing access from Bobby's Lane into it. There was always going to be access from Forest Beach to the property, to the dwelling. We've shown the garage that's being proposed.
And you changed the orientation of the dwelling and the garage?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Madam Chair, can I, yes, Annie, can you zoom in on more?
It's a little hard to see. A little bit more. So this is, these are the proposed...
The session's over, Annie.
Thank you, Annie.
So we have the 7% driveway coming up, a Belgium block apron at the end, just to differentiate. As we're all aware, this is a fairly popular town facility.
So the driveway is much shorter?
Yes, it is.
Yes, and the turning T on the front, that extends from the frontage on Bobby's Lane, is much lower down?
It is.
Yes. So the access to the house is by foot? Are there stairs? Is there a pathway?
There'd be stairs right here that get you into the walkout level, and then there are stairs and stairs that would bring you up to the first floor level.
And you did have access from 79 Forest Beach Road before?
Yes, we did.
But now, if I may say so, it's much more emphasized since it goes directly into the garage and the orientation of the house has changed. And I just want to point out to the board, I think probably most of you remember, but that was a problematic issue before.
It was.
That frontage and primary access needed to be from Bobby's Lane, but then we ran into the difficulties with the drainage issues. So now, have you changed the drainage also on that side? Have you...
We kept the drainage that was part of the approved plan. We will look, we didn't want to get too far ahead, making sure that the planning board gave the nod. We will look at the stormwater that's generated from the T at this point and be able to put a smaller drainage structure in at the top. In the meantime, the butter has put in a leaching catch basin at the bottom of the hill. And part of this work will pave around it so that the dirt that's going into it now won't go into it.
Okay.
That'll keep that lasting for quite a bit longer.
All right. We'll get into questions and comments from the board, but I did want to ask Art Spru, if you wouldn't mind. I do have a copy of some of the comments you made after your site visit, but if you, would you like to summarize those and present those to the board and make any other comments you'd like, Art?
Sure. I have met with Mr. Peralt out at the site on August 18th with Ryan. And I think one of the first things we emphasized is that we wanted to make sure that we were still trying to commit to the issues that were raised during the original public hearing for this subdivision. There was existing flooding on Bobby's Lane, and that was really important to make sure there wasn't anything that was going to be done that was going to increase that or cause more problems associated with that. The approved plan did address that issue. There was, of course, the infiltration system at the bottom of Bobby's Lane. There was capturing of the runoff of the drive with a separate system. And then there is many other contours in that, or the vegetation was left in its current state. And that also benefited the reduction in any kind of runoff. So what I noticed on this plan, which was a concern, is that the, with the adjustment down at the lower level where there's a T, there has been a significant change in the number of grades, contours, I should say. And much more of the site is being restructured, recontoured. And again, it just creates more opportunities for stormwater to run off the property. I know Thad said that they hadn't gone too far into looking at the stormwater to capture that, but the previous system was, it's not shown here now, so I don't know what is going to be captured there. The other thing that I picked up on was the house grade, the grade of the house was raised 5.2 feet. Now, that was also going to create additional contours and steeper slopes in the rear of the property. Again, that's something that complicates the stormwater-related issues. I think, and I think as a concern, we tried to work on the original plan to mitigate this as best as possible and have the applicant be the entity who needs to address this. I'm a little bit concerned with the plan as it's proposed because I think it's putting more burden on the board. If we're going to provide relief on this, which is what the applicant is asking, they're increasing contours, they're doing more disruption, they're raising the grade of the house, they're putting a garage in, all the access is off of 79 Beach Road. This puts a lot of burden on us and our planning board, and I know I have a little bit of concern associated with that. I don't think it belongs with our board. It needs to stay with the applicant to resolve this. I was hoping that we would see some sketches on this before a more formal design was done, but, you know, I can understand why Thad went ahead with doing something. It's tough to put a sketch together and make sure it works. But those are the things that I noted. I talked about many of these issues with Mr. Peralt when we met on the site there. I said this is important to make sure that these things are addressed. Now, we never talked about raising the grade of ours 5 feet. That complicates all the drainage in the rear of the property. So this was a little curveball that was thrown in that I didn't realize we had not had any discussion when we met on site. Those, just a couple of points that I wanted to share with you. Certainly, if there's any questions that the other board members want to ask of me, since I was out there and what I discussed, I'd be happy to review that.
Thanks. Thanks, Art. Yeah, so let's see if the, just a reminder to the board and the public that this is not even a preliminary review. This is just a consideration. You have an approved subdivision plan, which, as you correctly summarized, took some long and hard work on everybody's part. And the reason for that is there are a lot of difficult issues with this particular site. It is legally, it's, you cannot have your access from Forest Beach. The frontage has to be on Bobby's Lane. And, but that presents problems of drainage and the grading and so on. So it was a long, there was a lot of work and a lot of careful consideration put into the approved subdivision plan that you have. And I think even with that, how to put it, we stretched to the limits to come up with something that answered all of the concerns and questions about the lot. Now, we're considering the possibility of considering changing that approved subdivision plan. And I just want to open it up for the other board members if you have questions or comments. But all we're doing here tonight, this is just a preliminary discussion, to see if we can even discuss reconsidering a new subdivision plan. So, and Charlene, you were not part of those initial discussions, so.
Thank God. But I, I mean, this is kind of a nightmare of, yeah. I understand that this lot needs to have its frontage off of Bobby's Lane, but was there any thought to going to the Zoning Board of Appeals to request access from something other than your frontage? Maintain the frontage on Bobby's Lane, but have your access off of there, and you don't have to go through all this mess.
And that should just be a waiver before the planning board, not a special permit before the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I don't know what the bylaw says, if it says you have to have your access over your frontage. I don't know, is that something this board can waive? I know the board can waive...
It's more the issue that the access could not be from 7. It's more that.
But if they...
It's not necessarily that the access, I don't know. We'll have to review that.
We did provide other examples where we've done this before. My own house, I have frontage on Route 28. I have access over Nellie's Way.
Yeah.
I have an easement from Nellie's Way to gain access.
But that's not so much the issue as the issue that access was not adequate from Forest Beach because the way is too narrow? I think that was what the issues were.
And at one point, we had a full 20-foot way proposed, ready to go forward.
But didn't that mean going, creating easements and pulling out?
It was already in an existing easement and a 20-foot wide panhandle. There's a 16 and 1/2-foot wide easement that exists out there. So we have 36 and 1/2 feet from Forest Beach to 79. And then we had a 33-foot wide layout ready to go through 79. So there's plenty of room there to put an adequate way in for two houses.
And there were, but there was some reason why we could not?
It was frustration by the planning board that they didn't, they approved a preliminary plan. We came in with a different definitive plan. And I remember Mr. Dubas being very upset about that. He said it was being snowballed. And there was no intention to snowball the planning board. It was at the recommendation of the planner, who didn't like the idea of putting a road layout with an easement.
On 79 Forest Beach?
On 79 Forest Beach.
Weren't there some issues? It's just hard for me to remember all the details.
Oh, I know. There are a lot of details.
I think there were some issues where that couldn't be done.
Could I add a little something to that if it's not inappropriate?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Alan Peralt, and we got a preliminary plan on this back in, I want to say, October or like September of 2020, thereabouts, that initially did not have any improvements off of Bobby's Lane. So that's where the whole thing started, you know? And I think that was a concern Mr. Dubas has, that we really weren't doing much of anything off of Bobby's Lane, that you really were having two houses off of, you know, a shared access. So I don't think it was how long the driveway had to be off of Bobby's Lane. That's ended up being what it is. Because quite honestly, I'm 74 years old, and with the grade of the house, I'm more likely to be wanting to go in, we already had a right on the definitive to come in off of Forest Beach Road. So that was established, whether it's to a driveway or to a garage. I think that was established in 2022. And just from a practical point of view, it makes more sense to come in that way without fighting the grade. And when I did meet Mr. Spru out there, I appreciated him going out there. Part of the plan was to lessen the amount of runoff. I think we're disturbing the site less by doing a parking area at 7%. I know it's not going in as far, and I also don't think it's conventional to always have a house plan. We did. It's just shifted a little bit. I think the orientation should kind of be my wife's and my decision as I would shift it. It shifts to lay out a little better, and the garage was going to be more disruptive to the drive coming off of Forest Beach. Are we going to have two driveways? Yes. You know, there still is a functional driveway. It's not that we're not doing anything off of Bobby's Lane. That was one of the concerns of the board, is we weren't doing anything off Bobby's Lane. We're doing quite a bit because the expense of doing all that was significant. And I think economic hardship should be a consideration of sorts. I mean, that extra 15% itself cost almost $30,000. There's an additional drainage structure. I know that's not the board's only concern, nor should it be. But there's one less structure. We're creating less runoff. And I think the neighbors, for the most part, there's less impervious area. You know, the length of the driveway or the roadway in, to me, shouldn't be the primary reason. We are still creating legitimately two parking spaces coming in off of Bobby's Lane. So we still have parking there. We can still access the back of our house. But realistically, I'm telling you, I'm probably going to come in off of Forest Beach Road and park that way and go in at grade to my house. And I have talked to Mr. Fishman about that, the neighbor on Bobby's Lane. I think this will create less drainage issues rather than more, you know, because we still have sufficient systems to capture what we are. We're going to have less paved area. So that's some of my points.
Yeah, Charlene, I guess...
Yeah, Charlene, I guess my point is, do we even need to build, you know, having it on paper creates your frontage.
Yeah.
Bobby's Lane. If it needs to have, you know, zoning, I don't, I don't know who grants the access from something other than your actual frontage. I didn't bring my zoning bylaw with me. But if it's a matter of, you know, getting a variance to be able to access.
I don't think that's necessary. I.
I guess then, I don't know why we're going through this, if there's an alternative way. He shows that he can get what he needs to have.
That's not, you mean to have an adequate way on 79 Forest Beach?
No.
That's what, I think that's what the issue was.
And we've proven that before. We could produce an adequate way.
Catherine, I can give you some background.
Oh, Mr. Spru's on.
Yes, Art, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I can give you some background. One, and maybe this will help with Charlene's question. The first approach on this was to bring an actual, called a roadway in.
Right.
At a T-turnaround from Forest Beach Road. Well, the challenge of that was, is you had to upgrade that access point to sufficient right-of-way and roadway materials and cross-section and things like that. If, if there was going to be just treated as an access off of Forest Beach Road, that, that was a more challenging approach for the applicant. And I think that's when the secondary solution of creating a frontage off of Bobby's Lane, and that would be the frontage for the house. We always were concerned about having a panhandle off of a panhandle, which is what this was tending to go to. And that is not something that we were interested in allowing as any kind of a way for people to get around some of the access-related issues. So this, the outcome of the, the final approval resolved it with the plan as proposed, which was the, it was a difficult thing to accept it as a board, but we did, because there was, there was actually an access which was created off of Bobby's Lane. So this is pretty much circumventing all of that, in my opinion. And I think we have to be very cautious about that. And from the standpoint of, well, this is essentially a panhandle off a panhandle, and that's not allowed in any form. So that's just some of the background, maybe that helps clarify it for, for you, Charlene.
Thank you, Art. It's been a while, and I just didn't remember all the details, but, but that was the issue. And also, as I recall, the applicant did not want the expense of upgrading the access off of Forest Beach Road to be a public way, you know, which would have been necessary. And then, and the board did not want to create a panhandle off a panhandle. And I would, I think what I'm saying, I'm seeing here, is the modifications as they're presented make it very clear that your main access is going to be off of Forest Beach. And in a sense, that I agree with what Arthur is saying, that in a sense, you're circumvent, we're circumventing in that case, that issue of creating a panhandle and the issue of the necessity of upgrading the way that extends off of Forest Beach. We're kind of saying that it's not what it is. And I think that's what the board was hesitant about in the previous consideration, which is why we wanted to make it a clear option that frontage and access was off of Bobby's Lane and dealing with the drainage issues as, as fully as possible. So that was the conclusion for the last, for the definitive plan that was approved. And I agree, it was, it's a difficult situation. The lot is problematic, and we just tried to do our best to approve something that worked. But I agree with Arthur, we, we kind of felt we stretched everything as much as possible. This is, in some sense, stretching it a little more. And we, so, anyway, but if I can open it up to more, any other comments from the board? So we just need to decide if, if we want to consider this, if we want to consider a change in what's already been approved. Any other comments from board members? Or Arthur, do you have any other further comments?
No more further comments, other than, you know, how, how the board member, other board members feel with these proposed modifications.
I should read, Bob Dubus is not here tonight. He did send in a note. I'll just, he just feels that the address should be on Bobby's Lane, not on Forest Beach, since that is where the frontage is. And if the address stays at Forest Beach, again, he's concerned about the planning board would be condoning the creation of another panhandle lot. And that's what we want to avoid. So it was a difficult situation. I'm not sure if this is going to make it better, less difficult. I guess that's what we're trying to look at.
I think the difficulty is just the topography of the site. I mean, if you.
Absolutely.
To one of the board members' points about a variance, a variance is looked at as, is it more harmful to the general good? Is there a cost issue? And is the topography an issue? And I think that's kind of what it is. But we, we did have a driveway coming under that plan off of Forest Beach Road. I remember speaking at the time, I was two years younger, but I was still going to be more likely than not driving off of Forest Beach Road. And as Thad has pointed out, there is precedent for that. And it's not like we're not improving some, doing improvements. Trust me, they're fairly expensive, the improvements we are doing. We legally are creating an access off of Bobby's Lane, you know? So we are, I don't think it's a precedent for the board. I think it's trying to work with the topography of the site, you know, and just be cogn, be incognizant of that. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, if you're going to go off of Bobby's Lane, you have to upgrade it to the proper cross-section, right-of-way and roadway. That's not something that you were agreeing to do, because it was going to be a onerous and extensive work to be done. So if, if you want your proper access off of Forest Beach Road, create a subdivision road, a T-turnaround on that secondary lot. That's the way that it would probably be done.
We were having difficulty with defining the turnaround T because of the historic home that was preserved.
Yes.
I'm not arguing with you about that. There was a lot of issues associated with that, and that's why you, you as, as a design team and an owner decided to move away from that approach. And then the only other solution was is a ro, an access off of Bobby's Lane, which was created on paper. But now you're trying to circumvent all of that. And I, and I don't think that that's something that we should support as a board.
But a driveway was part of the approval. A driveway coming from Forest Beach Road was part of the approval. So there's no circumvention.
With a driveway off of Bobby's Lane, yeah. You had a driveway and a full access off of Bobby's Lane.
And we had a full driveway coming off of Forest Beach Road.
It was.
Any, do you mind switching over to the, the previous? So this is the approved plan, and it included a full driveway, the existing parking area at 79, and then a driveway that came right down to the, the dwelling, two-car parking, two-car backup. And that was all part of the approval, and, and the board did indicate that access could be used over an easement as a secondary access, which frankly, the, they were going to use as their primary access while constructing this rather large road that was going to do very little.
Other comments from the board? I think, as I recall, the, in the initial consideration, to avoid having to move the historic building and to avoid the expense, quite frankly, the applicant didn't want to put in the expense of upgrading the access off of Forest Beach Road.
Oh, he was very willing to upgrade the access off of Forest Beach Road. He has the space for it. We had a full design plan for that. Well, we had most of a design plan for that because that was part of the preliminary. It was the planner was not overly enthused with the idea of the easements, having the turnaround within an easement, rather than having it within road layout.
Oh, I see. Okay.
But a road layout is nothing more than an easement anyhow, just with a, a different name.
Well, it's got a little bit more distinction than that.
And it still creates a panhandle, correct?
We were creating frontage for 79 from it, and we were creating a panhandle down here for the other lot. But we were providing the 100 feet of frontage in a shape that would work with the old building. I mean, that's irrelevant. We've.
Well, it, yes. Bob, did you have a comment?
No.
So I guess the question.
Didn't say much three years ago, and I've got less to say now, I think. Really don't know what to tell anybody on this one.
So the question before the board, this was just meant to be a preliminary discussion. It's not even a preliminary consideration of a new proposed plan. I think the question before the board is, you have an approved subdivision plan. Is the board willing to consider modifications to that approved plan? Are we, in which case, we would schedule, you know, the preliminary meeting and so on. So I think you're hearing that the, the board is not particularly enthusiastic about that, about that prospect. It, it was, it's a problematic lot.
Oh, yeah.
It has problems on both sides. And.
It's sad that the applicant would have been better off tearing down the historic building and putting three lots here.
That's not our, you know, that's not what came before the board. Yeah.
That's what the other option was.
Yeah. That, the board is not in a position to consider that possibility. That was never presented to us. So.
It, it was a while ago. During the preliminaries, we talked about that being a possibility.
Okay. So.
It was a while.
Would you like to propose that now? Is that what you're proposing?
No, no, the house has been renovated, and it's in very good shape, and I'm sure historic would be very upset if that were taken down, or proposed to be.
All right.
I think we understand where the board is coming from.
I think, and my colleagues on the board, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, I think Arthur's expressed it well. I think the board, in its initial consideration, with what was brought before the board, that, as well as the previous planner who worked with you, Ally Sabatino, that the board and the planner went to every length possible to come up with a good solution that addressed all the issues. And I think, and it took a lot of work, and even that solution was not entirely comfortable for the board to give approval to. And now you're asking us to reconsider it and kind of fudge it a little more, in a sense, if I may be blunt? And I don't know that the board is willing to do that. We can take a vote.
Not appropriate.
Yeah.
Not necessary.
Okay. Because this is just a preliminary discussion.
And also, just, just one thing, a definitive subdivision plan approves the division of land and however a road is to be constructed.
Correct.
The fact that the definitive plan shows a driveway, the board didn't approve the driveway. It's shown on the plan.
But it's just a driveway.
There's no mention in the covenant. There's nothing.
Because it's very clear, we did not approve a road off of Forest Beach.
Right, so.
And we should have never moved forward with the site design before you. It should have been limited to, in which case, we would be looking at just the road, the 7% section of road, and what we built for a driveway beyond it is none of the board's purview.
But that can't be your, but if it is your main access, you are, you know, you're kind of doing it without saying that, that you're doing it. And I think the board was not comfortable with that.
I understand.
Yeah.
Is that an official motion?
I don't think, well, I think Charlene is correct when she said, this is just a preliminary discussion.
Yes.
So there's, there's.
Nothing to vote on.
There's nothing really to vote on. I think the initial idea was, because Art and Ryan had gone to do a site visit, to have a discussion with them, but, but we felt it was good for the whole board to take a look at this and to get everybody's viewpoint. It's just a preliminary discussion, but, you know, I hope I summarized it properly that I, I don't know, and please correct me, my friends, if I'm wrong and not speaking for you, but I think we're reluctant to consider further revisions for this particular situation. It's always your choice if you want to bring it before the board as, or even as a request for a, I guess it would have to be a modification of an approved subdivision plan. That's what the request would be. And it's always your choice to do that.
And for improvements not within the road layout, not part of the covenant.
I'm sorry?
The driveway shown from Forest Beach Road isn't part of the covenant, so the board has.
No, is the turnaround part of the covenant?
The T-turnaround would be, wouldn't it? I mean, it's however, and I, I'm at a loss here because I wasn't here for the initial. So I only, you know, we just got the original plan this evening. I didn't delve into it or, or even see the preliminary plan. So it's hard for me to comment any further because I don't have the information I would need to, to even comment. But frankly, in, in my world of being a planner, the board approves the division of land and the construction of the road.
Right, and the frontage, and we have to make sure those things are taken care of. And I think what I'm trying to say is you can't sort of use, and this was what came up before, you can't, we're reluctant to have the access from Forest Beach used as the road and the access when it's not the road. I think that's what we're saying. It's not the road. And I think the board felt comfortable a little, with what we did approve, because you have more of a complete access from Bobby's Lane, which it decided was, we decided to approve the frontage and access from Bobby's Lane, but even that was problematic because of the drainage issues. So there were problems on all sides. I just think that what I'm seeing and what you're presenting to us is a, you're keeping the frontage on Bobby's Lane, so it's sort of technically connected, but actually, you're going to be using the access from Forest Beach as though it were a road, and it's going to be used as though it were a panhandle lot that gets created. And I think we're reluctant to consider that. If you wanted to change it, if you, to make the road and have the frontage and the turnaround, I don't, you know, as you're discussing, off of Forest Beach, that's a complete, completely different concept. off of Forest Beach, that's a complete, completely different concept. As I, again, it was a long time ago, and I actually don't recall all the details. I'm sorry. But there were reasons why that didn't work and why we had to consider the frontage to be on Bobby's Lane. So I guess what I'm saying is we've got to call a spade a spade. It has to be what it is.
Catherine, I think the other issue that we were concerned with when coming off of Forest Beach Road back then is that access to 79 Forest Beach Road was only a 20-foot access. If we were going to create a roadway there, it would require an upgrade of the width plus a right-of-way, which was going to be wider than 20 feet. And we did not want to see that as an easement. That should be a clear access width, it's sufficient. Now, we were willing to adjust the width of the roadway access, but not necessarily live with a 20-foot right-of-way related perspective. And as soon as we got into that, there was going to be a lot of removal of trees, regrading of slope, we'd take, there was going to be adjacent property that would have to been acquired. There was a lot of complications with that. But that was a legitimate solution to this that we discussed and debated at length back two years ago or so on this. So, and, and no one wanted to do that because they thought it was going to be more impacts than anything else. This was the alternative that, that we all could get our head around.
Right. So is there some reason why the approved subdivision plan can't be put in place?
Costs.
Costs. Okay.
We're talking about dropping the elevation of the site down several feet. We're talking about the steep-pitched driveway, and you're looking at $350,000 worth of site improvements to get the lot to be buildable, which is excessive for one lot.
And this alternative that you're proposing is less cost?
Yes. Maintaining more of the existing grade of the property. I mean, that, that 5.2-foot difference, there's still, with the proposed, and Annie, do you mind going to the other plan? There's still a proposed cut in the southwest corner of it, but it's only a couple feet rather than, we have there a 38 to a 41, three-foot difference. And the approved plan was, the approved plan was six-feet difference. The approved plan dropped everything down. We had a low point in the middle of the property near the turnaround. This swale, everything was going this way and into a bioretention area. With the regrading, everything would come this way. Do you mind scrolling? Thank you, Annie. Everything would go to the property line where that swale could be put in place between the two properties.
Yes, Charlene.
Thad made a comment that really kind of went in my mind, that the only way to make this a buildable lot is to grade it. Well, then, it wasn't buildable lot to begin with? I find that hard to believe.
Those comments did come up in the initial consideration.
Perhaps it's not buildable the way they're designing the lot itself, placement of the house and other things. You know, it, it may be this, that they can't get what they really wanted to in the first place. They need to rethink, you know, form follows function, function follows form. To me, I was in school, form follows, or function follows form. You, you make whatever it is you want to build into what you've got for an existing situation topography-wise. So it just may be, it's in the wrong place.
Those comments did, to my recollection, those comments did come up from time to time in the, during the initial considerations, that we might have to consider that this is not a buildable lot.
Oh, it certainly is.
Or not, or not the way it's being designed now is ideal.
Yeah.
But that's not for this board to figure out.
Yeah.
And at this point, I think we're just kind of, I hate that term, beating a dead horse, but I think we're, that the horse is dead, folks, right now with what we're seeing here.
Yeah. I'll just ask, if there's any more comments from the board, I, I mean, I think you've heard from us. And again, this is just a preliminary discussion, considering it's certainly up to you whether, and up to the applicant, whether you want to bring a redesign of the sub, you know, a modification of the subdivision plan before the board. But I think you've heard the board's concerns, which were the same concerns that were with great, you know, kind of great stretching and struggle were worked out for the initial approved plan.
Very well.
Yeah. Any other comments, Art?
No, you have to talk into the microphone.
All set. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, was there anyone? This is, again, just a preliminary discussion. Yeah. Did you have a comment, Warren, or?
Yeah, Thad. I don't remember the original plan or suggestions that we saw, but was the house on them at that time?
You had asked for the house to be on them, so they were.
No, I know that, but when, what was presented, and I remember seeing a driveway off of Bobby's Lane.
Yes.
Not just, not just a turnaround.
Annie, if I can get you to change again, please?
And I don't remember that the driveway went anywhere because there was no house in the plan.
They showed us where they're going to place the house.
It was difficult to talk about the drainage and the grading and so on unless we had some idea where the house was. So that might be convenient to have it on there without belaboring a point. I'm just trying to refresh my memory here.
Oh, sure.
But I do remember seeing a driveway that went up the hill off of Bobby's Lane.
It's what's on the screen now.
So this is the approved plan?
Well, if you can see that.
Yeah. Maybe Annie can, can you zoom in? It is a little hard to see. Thank you so much.
So the 7%, the 15%, 2%, the building located on the site, so we had a paved driveway to get to the lower part of the house, and then we had a stone driveway coming in off of Forest Beach Road. And a significant amount of grading. While coming in here, taking out the trees was a concern of the board's, this plan will also take out a significant number of trees. The trouble with the site, we have a 41, 42 down to a 14.
Yeah.
So it's working with a topography of a 27-foot difference.
Any other comments?
Thad, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
All right.
I hope you've gotten a sense of our concerns. And again, the board hasn't made any decisions. This was just a discussion. It's your decision whether to request a modification.
Very appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
The next item on our agenda is our long-range planning. And I think what we want to start with is an update. Katie Donovan is here, our community development department director, and she has some updates for us regarding moving ahead with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center district zoning. As you recall, there's a number of items in play, a number of balls in the air. We wanted to work with Cape Cod Commission to work on the draft for the wording, for the new pieces that need to be added to the bylaw, having gotten a response from town councils for the wording on some of those issues. Second item was doing a build-out with the change density. And again, one consideration is to see if Cape Cod Commission can do that. Then we're also looking at the possibility of having visuals prepared based on the build-out analysis. And then we also have to look at what our plan would be to bring this out to the public. So there's a number of, of moving parts that are in play. Katie has some updates for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did have a conversation with the Cape Cod Commission. They are willing to work with us. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to go over timeline. I received late this afternoon a draft scope of work, which I haven't had a chance to fully review. But we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon to talk about timeline, what would be within their scope, what, you know, when we could expect. And this is just specifically for the inclusion of the wording that town council had suggested, the special permit criteria, perhaps, you know, definitions and things for year-round housing that town council had suggested that we incorporate into the bylaw. So again, we'll have that conversation tomorrow afternoon. I will likely have an update for the board as far as what the agreed scope of work would be and timeline for when we will have those items for the board's review. But my expectation would be that it would be, you know, we were hopeful that it was going to be towards the end of January for maybe review at a February meeting. That, again, based on, you know, their scope today, they were looking at more of a, of a March timeline. I would like to have a conversation with them tomorrow to see if we can get something sooner. I think it's important. As far as the build-out analysis goes, they're also willing to work with us. However, their suggestion was that we work with them to apply for what's called a DLTA grant, which is a district local technical assistance grant, and that that would allow us to work with them as well as a consultant to complete the build-out analysis. That timeline would then take us, you know, into, I would assume, late spring for the build-out analysis. And as far as community engagement and education, I think that the board has realized that that's an important component for what we want to do. And we want to, we want to keep the momentum moving forward regardless, you know, of where we are from a staffing perspective. And so what my thought was perhaps that we look to work with a consultant, as has been done in the past with, I believe it was the South Chatham Village Center zoning, that a consultant was hired. They worked specifically on, you know, on the bylaw, but they also did the community outreach and engagement on that, for that particular zone change. And so I just wanted to get the board's thoughts on whether or not you'd like us, the community development department, to look into engaging a consultant that would work with the board to do that community engagement and outreach and education for the bylaw, you know, moving forward into this, that would be the summer and then the fall for that education piece for the following May 2025 town meeting. So happy to take any thoughts and questions. Again, those were the updates that I have to provide for tonight, but I think that, you know, I've identified some funding that we have available that I could utilize for a consultant. And I, and I think it's important, we want to move this forward. I know the board wants to move this forward. I think everybody at the last meeting agreed that the build-out analysis was a very important part of this. But I think that, you know, even Vice Chair Spru had mentioned that the, the education and outreach, the education part of it is really, really important at this point in time. And he felt that, you know, that needed to, to be ramped up a bit. So I just wanted to get the board's thoughts on that.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to mention, I would agree. I think one thing we learned from the initial meetings was, we had been going along with the idea that because this bylaw has been in process for some time, nevertheless, there's been several iterations of it. But we had this idea, because it's been in process for a while, that the community was familiar with it. But I think it became clear to us from those initial meetings that there's a lot of lack of information, lack of knowledge, and that our community engagement needs to be very strong. And I would hope that with the build-out and the visuals, that we could set a target date. Usually, we consider the summer as sort of wasted time, but I actually think that if we can't get started by late spring, that we shouldn't wait till fall. We should set a target date that build-out visuals and a, and a, a public outreach plan is in place by, and started by the summer, if we can do that, and continue on to the fall and then into 2025, in the early months of 2025, because the most important thing is to repeatedly bring out the information to the public and other boards. So anyway, that sounds like promising news. I'd like to hear from the other board members of comments or questions. Yeah, Warren?
Thank you, Katie, for the update. I mean, a couple of preambles here. I'm certainly not in favor of moving forward to town meeting unless we have reasonable expectation it's going to get approved. I'm not in favor, really, of moving forward until we have, if not a definitive build-out analysis that deals with the questions that have been raised, then at least enough of an indication that, that what the zoning might result in, in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, is not going to create problems long-term for the town even before a build-out is done. That said, I mean, I've been working on this for three years now, and I sort of feel, much as I hate athletic analogies, you know, we're kind of in the red zone here. I mean, I was expecting to have already seen a final draft that we could tinker with a little bit, but very little that covered the density which the board had okayed, which may or may not survive a build-out analysis, but would needed to have added to it wording that would capture what town council had indicated was possible in terms of restricting leasing in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center to not less than 180 plus two days, and that we needed work with respect to conforming the draft, the draft zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center with respect to affordable, attainable housing language to be consistent with the other, other parts of the zoning in the town. We had not seen anything for those two items, but those were, for me, anyway, the two things that we had gotten basically everything we needed to do the drafting. And for me, our principal objective ought to be to have a final draft that can then be the basis for everything else that we have mentioned or that you've mentioned, which I agree with completely. You can't start selling something until you have something to sell, and that is, what does it look like? People can raise questions, whatever. They can pass it around, they can look it up. But it would, the draft ought to assume the density that the board here has agreed to. That may survive, it may not survive. If a build-out analysis says it can't be what we agreed to, well, it can't take very long to change the density that's in there. I mean, all right, when it goes to town meeting, that has yet to be decided. But I think we need it in order to go forward with public comments, with any sort of formal aggressive selling of the proposed zoning, we need to have a final draft that is going to be final, that we could go forward with to town meeting if the, all the questions are asked and everything else. Because without that, it's impossible really to answer every question. If it's out there for people to look at, think about, raise questions, they can be answered. But in the abstract, we don't have it. And again, I recognize, I don't know how long it's going to take to get a final draft that would then be the basis for doing the, well, the build-out analysis. It would be the basis for the attainable, affordable housing comments and addressing them that have come up. It would be the basis for developing the visuals that could be used to say, okay, here's the draft proposal, here's some examples of what it's going to look like. But until, you can't go forward with the, the, the marketing of this draft until you have it. And we don't. So I don't know what it's going to take, granted that we don't have a planner at the moment, which is where I think most of the work was being worked on or contemplated. which is where I think most of the work was being worked on or contemplated. But that's, that's really where I'm coming out. We, we need a draft regardless of, without any presumption about what that means in terms of going forward for town approval.
And I think that's the step that Katie just discussed with us, that she's, we're working with Cape Cod Commission to finish the draft on the additional points. And she's meeting with them tomorrow to work out a timeline about when we're going to see that final draft, which we're hoping to be sometime in February. But I think Katie needs to discuss it with Cape Cod Commission, and she does have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. Just to clarify a point, it actually has nothing to do with whether or not we have a planner. In my initial discussions with Ryan Christenberry after the initial outreach in October, so this is early November, Ryan was very clear that the amount of work that still needed to be done on this bylaw meant that we would need to postpone it to annual town meeting 2025. And if you remember, I did suggest to the board that we needed to start thinking that way in our first meeting in November. And that was in response to Ryan's recommendation. This is because a lot of what does need to be drafted, it's not just a simple writing of a sentence or two that can be plugged in. There's a lot of, it's fairly complex, and there's a lot of references that need to be considered. And it probably is, I would say it's the best approach to have Cape Cod Commission do it as a consultant for us in this, in this case. Even if we had a full-time planner in, in place, that may be a better route to take because it is fairly complex. The board will need to look at that draft when we get it. The board will very likely have some questions and input, and then we, there may be some, a couple of discussions back and forth. And then, of course, it does need to go to town council again for final review. So, so Katie's giving us a timeline on that. She'll be talking to Cape Cod Commission tomorrow, and we should be able to have something more solid as far as their timeline after that meeting.
Madam Chairman, I would only agree completely. I'm not criticizing Katie or anybody else. I'm not advocating for a timeline to get to the town meeting. I'm only clarifying that for me, the objective ought to be to create a final draft that can be the basis for a marketing plan, that can be the basis for explaining it to the community.
And that's, I'm just saying, that's exactly what we're doing.
Well, but that wasn't said, per se. It was talked about in terms of, we're talking to these people, we're talking to those people, then we're going to do, the objective is to get a final draft, and then we can talk about how we're going to sell it. But until we have it, and the objectives, everything ought to be focused on trying to get it to us. Now, if we see a final draft and we have to make changes, so be it. That's fine. The objective is still to come up with the final, final draft then.
I think that's exactly the steps of action we've been discussing. These are exactly the steps of action we've been discussing and that we just discussed now in, in the last several meetings. These are exactly the steps of action that we've been discussing. First, we need to have the final draft for the additional points. There's no reason that the build-out analysis couldn't be begun concurrently. Yeah, there's no reason that they can't be done both at once. So it's more depending on Cape Cod Commission's schedule and procuring the funding for the build-out analysis that would determine the timing of how the build-out analysis would be done. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, point well taken. That's exactly what the plan is. Other comments from the board? Charlene?
Go for it. I mean, I, I like where we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the, the grant is a, is a terrific idea. I worked with those in the past, and you end up with a really good product that's targeted for what we're targeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the idea of a grant, I think, is wonderful. We may even get some of the people that really got this ball rolling in the first place with the whole idea of, we got a grant to examine the whole idea of form-based zoning. And, you know, in a way, I love the idea, the people that started with us or the people who may say, okay, this is what it's going to look like.
Good, yeah. Thank you, if I may, Madam Chair. So yes, we would be working with the same team that we worked on with the, on the form-based code side of this. So there'd be, you know, again, all familiar faces. And, you know, they're a great group of professional planners. So I think, you know, I, I expect that we'll get a great work product.
Using them, again, gives us the extra benefit of having them available, potentially anyway, to make presentations.
Sure, they'll, they would work alongside us to do that. So I agree.
Yeah, good. Other comments from the board? Or Art, do you have any comments you'd like to?
I'm in, I'm in alignment with Charlene. Go for it.
Yeah.
I, I think that the idea of hiring a consultant for the bill analysis is fine. I was a consultant for 45 years. I don't have any problem with consultants. So I support that. As a matter of fact, I think you can put more pressure on our consultants to move things along. So I would robustly support that piece. I've done my own work associated with a bill on analysis. I feel comfortable with it. However, it's certainly not something that is ready to be used as the basis for it. We do need someone who, in the planning area, to actually develop this the, the right way and make sure all the components are included in it. So I, I don't hesitate that we're going to be able to form something very close to what we have right now with the densities that's going to be supportive for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I would say just keep pushing along. Let's, the sooner we get everybody on board to, to start their pieces, the sooner we get, as Warren is suggesting, something to be put into our hands so that we can go to the next step.
Yeah, great.
I'm all for it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Art. Any other comments? Great, yeah. So I think it's a great plan, move full speed ahead. And of course, we want the earliest target dates possible. You'll have more information for us when you talk to Cape Cod Commission. I think what happened here, just, you know, to summarize, I think as we reviewed what we had, we realized there were certain unintended consequences of some aspects of the bylaw, and we need to deal with those. And we had to bring those before town council. And then town council has responded, and now those need to be integrated into the final draft. So there were some unintended consequences of the increased density that we wanted to mitigate and channel so that we get the results that we're looking for. And then also, I think what we discovered in some of our initial meetings in October with the public and with other boards in town is that there actually is more lack of information than we had anticipated. So we need to go forward with a very full, complete presentation that we repeat over and over again so that it does get out to the public in a very complete and understandable way so that people really understand it and they can feel confident enough to vote for it. So I think that's what we're looking at. Great, yes, Katie?
If I could, Madam Chair, I just want to bring attention to, you know, the board, the board has been working on this for a very long time. But the world has changed a lot since the board started working on this. Short-term rentals were not an issue, which is one of the board's concerns at this point in time. The economy has changed. COVID has changed. There's a lot that has changed and made the board have to think twice about, not just increasing density, but then how do you control that density when you do increase it? How do you make sure that those units are available on a year-round basis, which is part of the work in the special permit criteria that the, that the Cape Cod Commission will be working with us on? And I think that it's, you know, when you take a step back, I mean, we all want to move this forward as soon as possible. But we want to do it right, and we want something that the town can support. And I think the fact that, you know, as all of these, you know, major, significant, all life-altering issues have come about in the, you know, since we've started talking about this, I think it's just a matter of making sure that we address all of those issues appropriately to, to move this forward and get it passed.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so let's go.
Madam Chair, did you want to take?
Can I speak on this or not?
On West Chatham or on housing in general? Sure, please go ahead.
Hello, thank you, Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham. I just want to point out or express some frustration about where we are in this process. I realize this is where we are, but I feel like we're exactly where we were a year ago. And I know all the changes that you just mentioned, Katie. Most of those have existed in the past year. The fact that we're just now having a conversation with the Cape Cod Commission, if that's the necessary step to take at this point, that we're having it now in January 2024, I think we should have been having it a year ago. And so I'm emphatic about that, and that's in the past. We can move on. But I don't want to be in this position next year. I want to move forward succinctly and make progress because it seems like every year we get here and we don't go forward. In regards to the outreach, there's a lot of people in town that are willing to do the, help with the outreach. I think I had a conversation around the time when Ryan did the presentation, and I was told that UTIL was coming in to do, we had, and that was supposed to happen in December, I thought, or maybe January, and they would help us with material to do the outreach. We're, you know, we're willing to move forward to start dripping this into the community so that they understand the language and what we're talking about. I just would like to know where UTIL is on this because they have a very creative information that they share with the public that we could use.
What is UTIL?
They're a consulting firm. So we have not had any conversations with UTIL. We have had, I have had conversations with Union Studios, and we had talked with them about potentially doing renderings. And the idea was that we would do the renderings once we have the build-out analysis. I think that the board had mentioned that at the last meeting, that they would work with us on renderings. We did also talk with them about, actually, and I have a meeting scheduled with them later this week to talk about having them come in to do a presentation on their missing middle that they had presented to the Cape Cod Commission a couple of years back. So it was not UTIL for this particular project. This was specifically about Union Studios that we had talked with them about doing some renderings or visuals.
So they were going to be doing some renderings, but they're going to wait on the build-out?
They're going to wait until we do the build-out analysis so they can do them based on the build-out analysis.
So all that is expected to maybe come to fruition in the summer by the time you get the Cape Cod Commission to build out and then?
Cape Cod Commission is doing specifically drafting of some additional language that's needed to address points that we really just had that have been developed over the past year. I do need to express disagreement. There's been an enormous amount of progress made over the past year, an enormous amount of changes. The board has had to respond largely to this issue of unintended consequences and to consider those deeply. And we've gone, so there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of progress over the last year. What we're engaging the Cape Cod Commission to do now, we couldn't have possibly engaged them a year ago because we didn't, we didn't have the issues in place and clearly defined by the board, then submitted for advice from town council. Then we had to receive that back from town council. Now we've identified those issues, which involve certain unintended consequences and how to mitigate the effect on the increased density that we're proposing. So now that is ready for the final draft and the final wording, which is what we're going to be asking Cape Cod Commission to do specifically on those points. So that actually wasn't even ready to be done until a couple, you know, until just the recent meetings. And that's what we're talking to Cape Cod Commission about. We're also talking to Cape Cod Commission about doing a revised build-out analysis. They did do a build-out analysis back in 2014 based on the density of four units per acre. It's a long time.
Right.
The density we're proposing averages out to not something that's actually significantly greater. But because of the initial responses, we're just feeling that we need to bring a very strong presentation before the public that includes a build-out, a renewed build-out analysis plus visuals plus a plan of action. We're even thinking we should be videotaped presentations that are available on the website, et cetera. And plus, meetings constantly over, over many months prior to annual town meeting 2025. So the steps of action are Cape Cod Commission working on the final draft specifically for these two points, which were specific issues, either concurrently or just immediately following. And this depends more on Cape Cod Commission's schedule and putting the grant in place to do the updated build-out analysis. We would want to have the visuals, if they're done by Union Studios, we want them to be based on the build-out analysis because whatever visuals get produced would be a little different. They should reflect the full build-out analysis. So then that would be put into place once the revised build-out analysis is done. As we've just discussed, we'd like to get this ready to begin the presentation to the public, you know, by late spring or early summer. And as I mentioned, we usually consider the summer as useless time. But I think in this case, we shouldn't consider it as useless time. We should begin bringing it out to the public as soon as we can.
Okay, I appreciate that. I didn't mean to imply that your, your board was remissant in, in doing the, all the work that you do. I know you do an incredible amount of work. I just wish that we had been engaging some of these other, engaging. I think we could have engaged the commission sooner than this, if that, if that's the necessary step that we need to take at this point.
We didn't even have the issues defined until, that's what I'm trying to say. They're being engaged to do some very specific drafting on a two, it's two or three specific issues that we got, that we needed a reply from town council. So I don't think we needed to engage them. We're, we're engaging them specifically to draft that language to address those issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and then just on the outreach, that we need, we need more support within the town staff to be willing to do the outreach.
We've been, I think we may engage a consultant to help us with community outreach.
Okay, let's, we'll see what happens.
I think that's what's under consideration right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And Madam Chairman, just one other, just for clarification for my own benefit, the build-out analysis will be done presumably with the assumptions that we have already reviewed and decided we favor as a board.
Yes.
So that's the build-out analysis, that's the result, whatever it is, will be, will assume the densities that we have.
Absolutely.
So it would seem to me that presentation of visuals, renderings would be under the same assumption. This is what we have proposed would look like, which is what the build-out analysis will be. So in reality, you don't need to wait for the build-out analysis to be done in order to create the renderings.
No, you absolutely do need to wait for the build-out analysis to be done, for the renderings to be based on the build-out analysis. You do need to wait.
But the build-out analysis will be based on what we have already drafted as the proposed densities.
Correct. Yes.
So we already know what the build-out analysis is based on, and the renderings would say this is what it would look like.
So, yeah, Art, did you want to comment or Katie?
Warren, just, just so I clarify, since I went through this a little bit for my own personal knowledge and due diligence, we said up to 12 units per acre. That is something, you know, as was, was relayed to us by some of the public, well, gee, that means you're going to have 12 units every place, everywhere. And that's not the way a build-out analysis will work. You take a look at the properties as they exist, and you take a look at the criteria that we're putting in the bylaw, and you say, okay, I have to have certain retail here. I can put so many units on this particular lot because I'm only allowed to based on its particular size. And you have to almost go through that scenario one by one. So it doesn't end up being 12 units per acre. It ends up being something less than that. But what is that something less? And then until you run through the scenario on, I think there's a neighborhood of around, it's 50 or 60 parcels, that, that takes time to, to, to run through that whole piece. When I spoke to- When I spoke with Catherine and Katie about this, one of the things they asked me, well, what happens if you have a parcel and there's a building structure on it, but somebody wants to just tear it down and restart the whole thing? And that would be the assumption that you would apply to every parcel then. It's not just adding to what's there. It could be a reconstruction of that entire parcel to meet the zoning bylaw. And that means it could be further development than what we see that might be more limited. So then what I saw is, is the number doesn't, it's not 12 units per acre, it's some, it averages out because some of the parcels have no development opportunity, some that are in the RPZ from the residential standpoint. So now all of a sudden, there is an average that occurs over the whole 37 acres that is much different than 12. Now what is that number? Is it eight? Is it 10? Is it six? Is it four? That's what this build-out analysis needs to do. And it, it, it's going to, you know, take a little bit of work associated with that for whoever is going to do that for us. And, you know, since the Cape Cod Commission has done this before on several other occasions, they're the right candidate to put this together as, as best as we can propose.
Okay. Katie, did you want to add something to that or?
Basically just what Art was saying. I mean, we need to take into consideration wetlands, setbacks, landscaping, parking, all of these other requirements that may not allow for an actual 12 units per acre to be developed on each site. So that's what the build-out analysis will, will take into consideration. So really just second what Art said.
Great, thank you. And it's best if the visuals are based on the build-out analysis because then they give a visual, what will this look like with full build-out, which is what the community needs to see. Yes, go ahead.
And, and the visuals will not be for the entire district. I think we'll look at, you know, three or four different parcels to kind of give an indication about what, what they could look like. It will, and if, we couldn't do visuals for the entire.
Right, yeah.
But, but just, so just at that expectation, I think it would be for about three or four parcels that we would do visuals based on the build-out analysis for the entire district. The other thing to keep in mind is that when the build-out analysis was done in 2014, it was done on a different layout of what this, of West Chatham was going to be. We didn't have the parcels on the north side, and it did include at that point in time the Ocean State Job Lot, which we know at this point now, a majority of that would be removed from the residential standpoint based on.
Correct.
The runway protection zone. So there's a lot of differences. It's not just, you know, a quick update to the 2014 because we are adding additional parcels as well.
Yeah, right. Yes, and, and what we specified in the Form Based Code is also, I think, it's a great refinement of whatever was done in 2014. So there's a lot of information that's been added. So, okay, good. So full speed ahead. Sounds like a good plan. We also wanted to just discuss, as I mentioned in December, might have mentioned it at one of the meetings in November, as we move along with West Chatham, the board expressed a desire to also move along with some of our other long-range planning initiatives and to do, so that we don't postpone them any longer. I think when we discussed it last, some of the priorities that we were thinking were the massing of residential structures. We've put a lot of work into that. Bob Wirthshafter and Ally did amazing research. I think, as I recall, where we cut off is, the research was done, but we hadn't really defined a path forward as to what, how we needed to approach the bylaw. I think we were aware that Chatham was very different from Truro, that we needed a different approach, and that one of the major things we need to consider is the fact that 70%, something like 70% of residential structures are pre-existing non-conforming, and what really needs to be addressed is the special permit process. So there's that. And the other priority, of course, we've, and you've gotten.
Can I, is there a document that you all came up with?
Let me circle back about that, yeah. The other, that's also in your packet, there's, there's the initial memo from the Board of Selectmen, from the Select Board, sorry, about looking into the massing of residential structures, which was in January of 2019. And we worked on it during 2019, basically got interrupted by COVID and maybe the RPZ considerations and so on. So, so there's the idea of picking that up again. There's also ever a priority is the housing and addressing housing needs, not just in West Chatham, but on a townwide basis. And you've got copies in your packet of a couple of memos from, one that was done in 2021 from Peter Kokolas, Affordable Housing Trust Chair, and then also from Gloria McPherson gave us some points. And then also, is there another one? Chatham 365 Task Force also had some points on housing. So, so those are two that have come up as priorities that we could pick up. And, but we also wanted to hear if you have other ideas you'd like to consider as a priority. Just want to circle back on Charlene's question about the massing. What I was thinking, should we decide that we want to pick up working on massing of residential structures again, that the first step should be that we would ask Bob Wirthshafter to present again the summary of the research. I think in one, there was quite a few meetings where we went through the research, but I, as I recall, there was a final meeting where you and Ally presented a summary of the research and for the board to be reminded of that. And Katie was also going to look through the meeting videos and try to find the date of that video when that final presentation of the summary of all the research you did was presented, and then just review that together as a board and start from there. That was the, that was my thought. Did you have something to add about that, Katie?
Sure, I, I have three meetings where the massing was discussed in the fall of 2019, and I can send the link to all the board members if you'd like to take a look at those meetings.
Yeah. And then I'd, I'd ask you, Bob, if you would be willing to sort of review that, yes, review that presentation again. It was very complete.
It was very good, Madam Chairman, just.
Yes, please.
The other side of the coin, I think, of massing that we discussed was the objective to try and encourage the main renovation and use and continuation of existing housing stock as opposed to merely restricting the size of a house that you wish to build when she bulldozed what was there. The idea, we were trying to find the right balance between incentivizing restoration of existing housing stock and at the same time restricting the ultimate size or at least regulating the ultimate size. And the two of those were, needed to work together if, in order to achieve our objective here in Chatham. It was not quite the same. It clearly was, I think, blatantly obvious that is any house too big on a non-conforming lot in downtown Chatham or in the area, 70% of the houses are non-conforming. No house has been built that is smaller than what got bulldozed that I'm aware of. They tend to be two to three times the size regardless. So anything that's three times or two or three times the size of what gets bulldozed on a non-conforming lot is almost too big by definition, right? Without any specificity, I mean, there's violent agreement on that sort of point. But the key was, all right, what kinds, you know, ultimately, you're going to have a special permit process by which you would be permitted to build or extend an existing structure or replace it. And the, the objective here was to come up with guidance to the Zoning Board of Appeals on metrics that ought to be considered as, as relevant in order to grant a special permit for a structure or an addition that is on an existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. So it was massing, yes, but also the objective of trying to incentivize maintaining the existing housing stock or working with it to preserve it. And, you know, that's, that's where we ended up taking a pause on that project.
Okay, great. So if the board feels this is still a priority, I certainly do. I mean, it's something we've had on our agenda ever since I've been on the planning board, which is, you know, something like 12 years or so. It's been on our agenda. It was part of the recommendations from Cape Cod Commission when they did the 2014 visioning study as one of the priorities that we should work on. It then came up again in 2019 from Select Board to make it one of our priorities. We've been focusing on West Chatham and all the various new issues that have come up with that. And, but now is the time, I would consider this a priority to revitalize this effort. And as I mentioned, a huge amount of work was done, certainly by Bob and Ally researching the accessories information so that we had very specific information about Chatham. As I mentioned, we also looked at other communities who had put this kind of bylaw into place. We met several times with, with the Truro Planner and Planning Board Chair and, and learned about their bylaw and their process. And Ally also produced for us a lot of information about what other towns have done. Anyway, there's a lot of research put into this, but I think the key point, if Bob would agree to do this, is to, to review the final summary of the research on Chatham that Bob and Ally did. And you did absolutely brilliant job, and I hope you can find it.
Well, I have something from 8:30, 2019. Is that? I have something from eight, from August 30th, 2019 is the only thing I see on this, on my computer. So I don't know if anybody has any reports that come after that.
Katie mentioned that there were, yeah, go ahead.
So again, there were, it was, that's likely the presentation or at least close to final presentation based on the, the dates that it was discussed at the board. Boards meetings of September 24th, 2019, October 15th, 2019, and October 22nd.
There must be a, a later report because.
And I likely have that in Ally, to be able to access that in Ally's old files.
If you can find that, I, this, what I have is pretty rough. And I know we, I know we refined it, so.
You put together.
I did not go back and have to do all that again.
Sure. And, and again, as I said, I think it's important if the board members would be willing to go back and actually review.
Yeah.
The presentation that was done at the final meeting, I think on October 22nd. I think that would be beneficial as well. And then, you know, perhaps have a review discussion when it's, when the topic is discussed next amongst boards, board members.
Yeah, as I recall, there was just, there were many meetings where you reviewed sections of the research and what you were finding out with us. But I do remember one meeting where you put it all together in kind of a summary that was presented to the board. That's my recollection. So that's what I'm hoping to find is that summary presentation. So we can just refresh our minds with what the facts actually are about Chatham. If it's. Yes, Arthur, go ahead.
I do have, I, I did retain my copies of those. They're at home back, back in Chatham, so I won't be there till February to dig them out. But if, for some reason, you're not able to find what Ally got put together, I'm, I'm sure I have the latest version of it. I usually keep the latest versions and throw out the very early ones.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll dig that up once I get back.
Okay, thanks, Art. Well, let's see what we can do with that. We, we were tentatively hoping maybe even at the next meeting to, to review, to do this review, January 22nd. Maybe that's a little too soon, but.
If you find it, it's not too soon. If you don't find it, it's too soon.
Okay, great. So why don't we leave it at that? That if we can find it, we could even do that, possibly that review at the next meeting, January 22nd. Then the other one is the housing considerations and, like I said, you've got a number of memos from everyone. And I think Katie was thinking that what we should do is, we need to integrate these recommendations and maybe go back to the Housing Trust and get an update on their recommendations. Have Gloria take a look at her recommendations and updated recommendations from the Housing Trust. And what I'm going to suggest is that we, we look at the various ones and we pick one or two that should be the priority that we can begin working on now. And again, maybe one of the meetings in February, we could set as a target, maybe the February 26th meeting, to review the housing recommendations and determine a couple of priorities with the help of an updated set of recommendations from the Housing Trust and with Gloria McPherson's review and Katie's input. Does that sound good to everyone?
There was one idea that Ryan had talked to me about that I thought had the most promise, and that was development of, of affordable houses on properties that are too small to develop. I really think that that's, that's an area that we should, could concentrate on now and get going on.
Okay, so that might fall under what Gloria mentioned when she mentioned, she had some district area regulations with that. Fall into that category? But yes, creating smaller lots.
Madam Chairman, I, I think that's a great idea, but I think it's, it's focusing on a different issue than we were faced with initially, which was, is anything too big? Not, not can we build things on small lots for affordable housing?
This is a separate.
That's, that's what I know, it's a separate issue.
Separate issue.
That is equally important, I think, but separate.
Yes, it's, this has nothing to do with the massing of residential structures. This is, has to do with housing initiatives. And I didn't review them in detail because we, we hadn't really intended to have a substantive discussion tonight, just a plan of action for moving ahead with other long-range planning initiatives that we consider priorities at the same time that we're moving ahead with West Chatham. And the housing initiatives as a group, and you've got several memos in your packet regarding those, that we want to consider those as a group. And I'm suggesting that then upon that consideration, we identify one or two that we can, you know, workably move ahead with one or two priorities. So that would fall under the house, you know, general housing initiatives. Okay? And that maybe we'll target a meeting in February, depending, to have Gloria, talk to Gloria and you, and have some response from any updates in the recommendations.
Yes, I've had a preliminary discussion with Gloria, and she's happy to come and talk with the board when, when you're ready to have her here.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So any other topics? I mean, there's a lot, there's other long-range planning initiatives on our plate. Those were the two that we discussed in December as picking up. Just, are you happy with those? I think we shouldn't take on too much at once, and we still need to move full speed ahead with West Chatham. Yeah.
Just for completeness, we might mention that on the course of the last year, we've come up with the idea of transition areas.
Oh, yes, that's a good point.
And, you know, the zoning that might be appropriate for transition areas outside of the neighborhood centers. We haven't really done any work on that, but there was a lot of positive feeling on the. but there was a lot of positive feeling on this board that that's an area for, for consideration.
Yeah, no, that's a, that might be able to be considered under one of the housing initiatives. Because what we were, what we're thinking about specifically for West Chatham, but it could be used elsewhere, is creating, as Warren mentioned, these transition zones on the east and the west of West Chatham Neighborhood Center where the residential density could be increased, but we wouldn't necessarily include the commercial piece that we've included in West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
And it would also be very clear that single family homes would be appropriate.
On smaller lots.
On smaller lots.
Yeah.
But not, not the commercial mixed use and so on in the neighborhood centers. So that sort of never got crystal clarity as to what we have with that.
No, we haven't.
But we sort of have a feeling that there's, there's a role to play for that.
Yeah. Maybe we could consider that as one of the housing initiatives when we take a look at housing, since we're targeting it in that way. Okay, great. Any other comments? Well, we might be at that point where, yeah, Katie, did you want to mention something?
Just, Madam Chair, do you want to send a formal request to the New Affordable Housing Trust to
Yes.
ask them if they have priorities that they'd like you to work on?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Prepare that for your signature.
Yeah, great, thank you. Great. So if there's no other comments, I think I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
May I have a second to that motion? Warren Chang.
Warren Chang approve.
Bob Wirthschafter.
Bob Wirthschafter approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru approve.
This is Catherine Helper, and I also approve that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Let's note the time as 7:20. Thank you, everybody, for your participation, and please enjoy the rest of the evening.